Okay, we're going to item number seven, which is an application for a certificate of appropriateness for the Borough of Manhattan, docket number 148059, block 1121, lots 154 and 55, 48 through 50, West 69th Street, Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. Two Renaissance Revival-style row houses designed by Gilbert A. Schellinger and built in 1892 through 1893. Application is to construct a rooftop addition and reconstruct and redesign the rear facades, modify the front airways and a portion of one of the facades, and to install windows, Zoned R8B.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Avenue Hobart Preservation Staff. Application is for work at the front, rear, and roof of the buildings at 48, 50, West 69th Street, related to the combining of these two row houses into one. The buildings are located on the south side of West 69th Street, which means Upper Park West, Central Park West, and Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. Regarding the front facade, an area wave also includes the reflecting of modern metal windows with metal-clad wood sashes and wood brick walls. The Commission rules do not allow the use of the metal-clad sashes at these arched window openings, but the remainder of the window openings can have aluminum-clad sashes under the rules. At 50 West 69th Street, which is this one right here, the proposal is to replace windows with doors and reconstruct the basement balcony at the parlor floor level, as well as to replace the airway walls and capings at both airways. The second part of this proposal is to construct a rooftop addition that will straddle both buildings and will not be visible from any color fair or fair. This portion of the proposal is being reviewed by the Commission because the building at 50 West 69th Street has a grandfathered rear yard addition. And the final portion of this proposal is to reconstruct the rear facades at both buildings. In 1998, the Commission approved the reconstruction of the rear 48 West 69th Street, which is this right here. As such, the entire facade was rebuilt. Additionally, the rear facade of 50 West 69th Street was altered with the application of modern coatings. The proposal is to rebuild both facades in their entirety without expanding the footprint or constructing an addition. The architect is here to discuss the proposal.
Hi, I'm Andrew Wright, architect for this project. Abby's done a great job. We're going to see the front, basically, the front facade of the split rebuild on 40 and 50 to match 48. 50 has been chopped up and put in apartments without the very, uh, if this... What it was, what it is today is the best and in bad shape. If you go back even to the cornice, we found the original cornice done by Gilbert Schellinger back in 1892. So we found he had a pattern of them. We could put it back to the way it was. She mentioned about the balconet, and we found that we had a context in the neighborhood in '46, balconets and garden entrance was not unknown in the blocks. So we're appealing to that with our little balcony addition in the front here. Here's the context photo of the neighborhood immediately to the east. According to our, we're going to match what's at 48 and 50. This is what's existing in 50. We will put in brick patterns and such, so maybe you can gather it. It's much more sensitive. On the rear facade, indeed true to the idea of the symmetrical windows, this is a 20 and 20, we reorganized it to a 15 and 20 so that we could keep the order of windows, supporting the intent of the areas of buildings, but also we found context on the blocks supported the idea of inequitable width so that it would make more sense interior and exterior. The brick is, but we're, right now, 40 and 50 is covered with tar. We stripped it off here at all that, make the same brick match. And here is a picture of it done in 3D, so you get a sense of it. Some contextual photos to give you an idea of what is going on now at 50 and what's at 48. Abby touched on the view. You can see there's two balconets now, which were joined in together, one larger one. We did a study of the block showing that there's many balconets, many additions at the top. We're not the largest, we're not the closest to the street. We stay within the guidelines. And then here's some pictures of the mock-up in the middle of winter. And you're afraid to come out in the snow. And so you cannot see it from the street at all. The remaining sheets are existing plans, proposed plans, backups, pictures, you know, details of windows, more photos to help if there's any questions.
Other questions? Yes, Nevada?
Did you, in terms of scale, are there other buildings around that are double buildings? Yeah?
Um, they're combined.
But it's sort of still so...
That's actually not really, so there'd be many people joining together. And the, the, what we were looking for is the patterns of, you know, Schellinger did, he was probably the most, second most prodigious architect. There was 700 pieces here, that's chunks. And 50 was his number, they were all 20 footers. But then if you see back, we did find, you can see that there's a variety, but how many of these are joined together into one, I cannot tell you.
So it's 20 and 20?
20 and 20 footers now. We just reorganized the back to get some...
But in the front, you still, it still will appear as two separate buildings.
Exactly. What we did there...
Because they kept the entrances and only the color is, right, the treatment. Yes, go back to the other...
This is the front where, yes, we're going to, we're, the front. The rhythm of what was originally designed is being restored. It goes again, and 50 was beautifully done 10 years ago. So we're using, uh, 48. So we're using 48 as our, uh, just we're going to draw the color brownstone. Everything's going to come off that sort of reeds consistently. And you see the photograph here, you know, the brownstone technique marches down the street. And so that was, we felt very important to get rid of this white, kind of tucked up, uh, preservedness.
Can you refer to the rationale for that asymmetrical rear facade?
At the rear?
Yes. If you notice, we had this 15-foot additions there, which were grandfathered. When, if you notice here, this was already set up and was 20, this worked very well. Now that we're having this appendage taken out and because of the interior, imagine this is a double-height living room. Then if you have the windows stamped over, we have to design the interior out as well. So I said, hey, we got this problem. I want to make this look really good and work with the side I have, but I have this. So this, and then, you know, I would have windows hidden in different places above. So it's kind of looking rather odd on the outside. So the concept is, you know, let's see if we can keep the concept of looking like two, but yet make sense to the interior of the design as well and keep... Where is that picture?
Oh, yeah.
Keep the, if you notice, how all those fourth-floor windows march along? Keep that intact, but yet still make the interior spaces very strong.
Are there any, are there any buildings on the, on the donut from where, you know, adjacent to your building that have just two windows wide?
There are, there are. As a matter of fact, good point, and I'll show you where they are. There was right on, right across, right in here, two, in here is, I remember I was standing there looking across. I believe this is a two-window? That's three. Then there's one down here, there's four windows across or something. So there's, you know, they kind of built as they built. And so it was very important, I think we might have, here's one. See, here's two, right there.
Let me see what's...
So there are other, there are other ways to keep the concept going.
I think, but just in terms of the double-height spaces, and I understand that inside you're going to have a double-height living room. It just seems that that pattern of having these very long windows, I mean, the, one issue is above that where you have two windows versus three windows. The other issue is like just below that where you have these long arched windows, which just seem antithetical to sort of the facades that are at the rear, where you have a clear demarcation of floors and have a residential scale.
This space presently is a double-height space. We're moving out.
Right, but the treatment of this is different from the treatment you're proposing. Isn't that correct?
Well, we're staying, it's still going to be for just the parlor and second floor. And we're carrying it across to make it larger. If, let me take it to the...
Well, I'm just looking at your, the, the proposed facade, right? So you haven't explored, you haven't expressed the floors in, in that facade, right?
The, the...
Right, it just reads as, as one very tall space.
Did you say mount the floor?
I'm sorry?
Did you say mount the floor?
No, the floor was never in, uh, this, uh, this is put in because of the size of the windows.
Right, so my...
But you see, remember from the inside, it does look a little interesting here. And you see this thing broken because it's a south-facing window. Just the light is very important, brownstone. And it was very important, this design, it is much lighter possible in the interior. But, I mean, it's well put that the, you know, you know, there's no argument to have a break somewhere here. It's mostly from, I guess, think of it as, you know, you have a tall window, you have the light coming in. If you break it, it breaks the continuity.
Right, I can understand the, the rationale from inside the room looking out, but I think I was more commenting about how it looks from the exterior and how that relates to the residential character in the rear.
Well, that's a good point. I, um...
Okay.
Yeah, we, we often do see double-height windows. What's interesting, can you go back to the, just the back facade for a minute? I mean, yeah, thank, thank you. You said originally that you're actually making it look like two. To my mind, you're not, because it's actually like the proportions are significantly changed. It's now like a three and two as opposed to, and the, the top is running across like a one. So you've kind of lost the sense of the row house on the back. We, we do usually try to preserve that to some extent. And the other question, I guess, is, so I don't see how it's really, I mean, I guess it might be two buildings, but they're two different proportioned buildings than they were originally then. And the other question is, just as long as you're, as I understood you, you're doing a, you're altering the facade, but you're not actually enlarging this, the footprint?
Yeah, exactly.
Not, not that it, you could have enlarged it, you know, whatever, but so you're not. And so you, you really had a blank slate. I mean, if you're going to, you could just start all over. Why did you end up doing the arched windows when you could have just done something completely different? Let's say a whole glass facade in the back or whatever it might be.
We did actually look at the concepts along labs. We looked at the concepts of things with the, the, it was a lot more, you know, the arch is a very favored element that the client liked and I liked. And it's a softness to it. And by having stronger piers between them gave a better sense of solidity. Because these are tall windows and the light coming in. And marching it around the corner, in which you can see better, I think, in that. Marching this, so this light could come in gave a beautiful sense here in the garden of just openness, inside out, outside in. So we, you know, we did a lot of studies on it. And we found that this was, we had material elevations and renders. But this seemed to be a very beautiful space, but yet keeping, we were close to the neighbor, you know, a little bit more protection. And there's, it's, there's a lot of trees in the back here between the buildings and people's backyards, it's very green and very lush, which is great. There's a lot of privacy from your neighbors. If you notice, people are just right there looking at you because they're somewhere evergreen. So, you know, it's very, very nice back there. And we just thought it would be such a great idea to take this eyesore and remove this balcony and clean up and bring a nice brick pattern around so that it'd be a lot more room, more contextual with nature. And the, the arrangement of the windows on the upper floors really following the lower floors. We're trying to keep semblance to what's in the order of the block and, and concerns of this commission.
So, but all the windows on the top were, were redone first because they are...
Yeah, they're being, they're going to be replaced with the...
But you mean, you put, you re...
Position them.
Here they are. See what they were, there's this and this and this. And what we did is we tried to draw, it's down here is the, is the, you know, we show other, other buildings in the block where it's done. These are some of the, from the terrace, as you can see, within I view, I can see other buildings that we're compatible with. And so that was this of the lower sheet here. So, yeah, but we wanted it to, you know, to have some windows below and other ones jumping around. I thought it was going to confuse the issue.
Any other questions? We'll take public testimony. Angela Martinez, Martinez?
Hi, I'm Representative Assembly Member Linda Rosenthal. I am Assembly Member Linda Rosenthal, and I represent the 67th Assembly District, which includes the Upper West Side and parts of Clinton, Hells Kitchen, and Manhattan. I am testifying today in regard to the application to the New York City Landmark Preservation Commission for a certificate of appropriateness to demolish the existing five-story apartment building with cellar and ground floor located at 203, 209 West 79th Street and replace it with a new 16-story residential building.
You're not, uh, it's a different project.
Oh, am I at the wrong hearing?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great.
That'll be, you'll get a chance to speak on that item later on.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. All right. Kelly Carroll?
Kelly Carroll, Historic Districts Council. This is another case of two single-family homes being combined into a single residence. Similar property came before the Commission last week, and it was discussed that large-scale projects like this should strive to blend in and maintain the appearance of two separate buildings on the street. This project introduces architectural elements on the street which never existed. The Juliet balcony above the entry at number 50 is inappropriate as there is no precedent for such an alteration. As a suggestion, the applicant could propose a stoop restoration, which would harmonize and unify the block. HTC also finds the rear yard extension scale, particularly the windows, overwhelming and inappropriate. HTC believes that an applicant's individual design choices should not come at the expense of the historic district, but rather enhance it. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Rush? Julia?
Hi, I live in the neighborhood. I'm a, I'm a designer, so I wanted to put in my two bits. I think this is a really beautiful design. I understand your reservations about the height of the windows. But at some point, it seems to me that the role of preservation should be one of aesthetics. Aesthetic should be playing a, a role in the decisions, not just the understanding of the, of the place. Fact is that the new design looks really beautiful, looks way nicer than what it was before. And it has already changed, what we had there before has already changed the character of that, those arch windows that we have right now are not significantly different than what is being proposed. And what is being proposed unifies the two buildings in a really beautiful way. Thank you.
Thank you. Max Yeston?
Max Yeston, Landmark West. The row houses in question were designed by Gilbert A. Schellinger, the second most prolific architect on the west side. Along with Tom and Wilson, he could be said to be responsible for providing the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District with the bulk of its built fabric. Schellinger's work can be found in areas as far-flung and diverse as Bedford-Stuyvesant and Greenwich Village, Ladies Mile and Carnegie Hill. While there are many examples of this architect's oeuvre throughout the west side, that should not be used as a rationale for such a whole-scale modification proposed here, and each one of his buildings should be reviewed on their own merit and their specific context. While the CVA Committee approves of the cornice restoration at number 50, we cannot condone the proposal for the new Juliet balcony. The 1940 tax photo indicates the presence of a straight stoop at number 50. According to the LPC, Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District Designation Report, prepared in 1990, Houses 50 and 46, both by Schellinger, originally had stoops that were subsequently removed. Therefore, the proposed balcony here takes inspiration from an alteration at House 46 that is not original to its design. We urge the applicant to look to the example of stoop restorations at 121 through 135 West 69th Street and continue this positive trend by respectfully restoring the original entrance at House 50. Regarding the rear yard design, simply because the current rear yard fenestration patterns at number 48 are not original to the building, this should not be a rationale for permitting an even more extravagant fenestration pattern. Rear facades on west-side rows tended to have a more austere utilitarian appearance with a sparser amount of punched windows. The proposed multi-story arched windows on both houses give more of an impression of an outdoor ballroom than a west-side rear yard. Also, the proposed fenestration provides no indication that these two buildings were once separate structures. Landmark West urges the applicant to revise the window configuration so a more symmetrical separation of the buildings is visually discernible as opposed to the one-and-a-half-building configuration now proposed. Furthermore, our committee is concerned about what material is intended for the rear house, rear of House 50, and feel that it should be red brick. Alterations such as this project contribute to the slow erosion of historic neighborhood development patterns encapsulated in the footprints and facades of row house blocks. While the proposed rooftop addition is not visible from 69th, uh, not visible from 69th Street and therefore does not interfere with the integrity of the principal facade, it will surely be visible from neighboring row houses along 68th Street and will overwhelm the block's current roof line. Our committee encourages the applicant not only to scale back the addition, but to symmetrically differentiate it in terms of materials or composition to further indicate that these were originally two separate buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Braun? All right, thank you. You're concerned about the structural integrity?
I would be, uh, would preserve the structural integrity.
Okay. If you'd like to speak.
Well, actually, just a question on the speech. I mean, I, I own 52 West 69th Street, and I went through the same applications of landmarks and virtually at that point. And I think in 2000, 2001, there was nothing allowed to change even the size of the windows in the rear of the building. But at the same time, the construction that is planned at 48 and 50, my major concern is what's going, what is being done in order to preserve the integrity, structural integrity of the building next door? Because we have common walls, at least one common wall. And obviously, any excavation and work and changing supporting walls or opening supporting walls between 48 and 50 will certainly affect the building next door.
All right, but usually in a situation like this, there are regulations or rules put in place by the Buildings Department. So if they're in historic districts and construction has to take place, they would have to follow those, a higher level of investigation regarding the structural integrity. And if any particular kind of underpinning needs to be done. So this applies to buildings in historic districts.
All right, thank you.
Is another person who'd like to speak on this item? Yes?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Mark Diller. I am a member of Community Board Seven of its Preservation and Steering Committees. We heard this application some time ago. We found the overall, we found that we could support the application, but there were some concerns that we wanted to highlight. One of which was the Juliet balconies, about which you've already heard. Another is that the parlor floor re-entrance to 50 West 69 has a grill work whose detail we found to be questionable, and we encourage the applicant to revisit that. I can't tell from the presentation whether you have, so I'll leave that to you. The other was, and again, you've heard it already, is the, the scale of the rear yard windows, which we found overscaled, but not sufficiently so to render them inappropriate. So we just wanted to highlight that concern. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are you representing the community board? Because we have the resolution and...
Oh, you do, great. Yes, I am, except for 207 West 79 today, when a colleague will be doing so.
All right, so...
But on this one, yes, I am.
Okay, all right, so we don't need to read this into the record.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, is another speaker on site, please come forward.
Good day, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to testify. My name is Shane Beglader, an effective property owner and resident diagonally opposite in the rear on West 68th Street. I truly hope you vote to deny obliteration of the row house character of this preserved rear yard donut. My family has owned 51 West 68th Street since 1979, and I have seen many changes to this rear yard donut in these past 35 years. I understand and appreciate people's need and desire for light and a view. To this end, I have seen large portions of brick facades replaced by glass in this donut. I am very compromised by this occurrence because, on the one hand, the original brick is quite beautiful to view, but I also observe the great joy for residents of in streaming sunlight. Balance, the balance I obtained between additional glass as a quality-of-life issue and the preservation of brick as the beautiful historical material is that each row house is unique to itself. At the end of the day, the ultimate joy residence of this donut share is the ability to observe a preserved, lovely, intact, row house, rear yard setting, unobstructed between the buildings of Columbus Avenue to the west until well past the mid-block towards Central Park West. Preservation, I thought, means maintaining the beauty of the past history for the enjoyment of this and next generations. The historical nature of the row house in this area is that it was built on a narrow lot, I guess averaging about 20 feet wide. This project, if you permit, will place an entire line of windows on every floor right at the meeting point for these two historical row houses. Should this occur, I ask you, what has preservation accomplished? The answer is, preservation has accomplished basically absolutely nothing. Once completed and standing before the structure, any viewer is able to see a 40-foot-wide monolithic building of modern design made of slick new brick and glass and metal and stucco. It will be a structure that until this point in time had no contextual relevance within donuts like this. But now, due to your vote, may become the new historical norm. I conclude again by asking the Commissioners to deny the obliteration of the row house character of this preserved rear yard donut. Thank you for your time, Commissioners, and have a nice day.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Do you, would you like to respond? Yes?
Well, me and Gord did an issue of the steering.
Yes.
We had had a different design here, so we modified it to be more compliant with the other...
Yes.
This question, on the rear facade of the L, you've got, it turns from brick to stucco? Is that existing or is that proposed?
That was proposed, and it was for the reason that wrapping the brick around, we were...
Yeah, there you go.
We were very interested. This is going to be actually colored with brown. So we're talking color, but for example, brown is ready. The coloration's not very good. But the idea was these were symmetrical so that it'd be in order here. And then this would break it, therefore not wrapping it... in order here, and that this would break it, therefore not wrapping a ton of brick around. And I would be, this is very close, so this is a lighter tone, more keeping with, most of the brownstones back there have painted facades. There are a lot of them, oops, let's see if I have a picture of some of the backs. You can see, here's plants, windows, I do have rear. Okay, but if you look, I'm starting to jump around so much. We did try to, you can see a lot of these brownstones are painted, not painted, tarred, brick, a little bit of everything. So we thought by bringing the stucco to the back at a lower scale, it wouldn't be certain interface, and kept to also keep the symmetry here.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? All right, we can close the hearing. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, why don't we first focus on the primary facade? And it seems the issue that was raised by testimony has to do with the Juliet balcony. Are there concerns about that? All right, any concerns about the change in color to match the brownstones? Okay, good. We can move to the, to the rear facade, which I think has definitely more issues. All right, questions and comments? Comments? Yes, Marjorie?
Well, sort of in the first place, you know, traditionally, kind of, we've been allowing all kinds of things to go on in the backyard, so some people take the approach of actually opening up the entire rear except for the top floors, because often we prefer that the top floor remain intact and they use, it's an entire glass facade, so, and that's a stylistic choice, whether you prefer to go modernist or classical, or, and we've definitely seen series of arches, we've seen everything, so I actually don't see why this would be any difference in this case. What I find so interesting about this is occasionally, not often, we see applicants, architects, take advantage of the existing L and not add to it, but actually take advantage of the L and use it in some architectural way. And this one I find so amusing, and I therefore think very appropriate, because it's retaining the form of the L, but what it's doing is, those Ls were originally designed for bathrooms and kitchens, and so, but what it's doing now is it's turning it into something grand. And I really like the, sort of, the displayed historical dialogue or reference to what was and what is in terms of how things change and their uses change. So, and especially with that long, narrow, very romantic window that, you know, it refers to, for me, it refers to the Juliet balcony in the front, it's kind of like, or Rapunzel, where Rapunzel lets down her hair from the tower. And so, I don't know, I think there's great romance in this design, all of which I think is appropriate to a nineteenth-century Historic District.
Okay, I just, the only issue I would raise is that since I've been here, I've heard often about ensuring that the rear doesn't read as one building, and I think we've been conscious of that. You know, we can break away from that concept if we want to, but I think I've heard that several times in the last couple of hearings, and I think if you go back just to the facade, in and of itself, I think, I don't have an issue with these windows, they do look romantic, but I think in the context of whether we want these buildings to still read as two separate buildings, then in that case, does this pattern of fenestration and treatment do that? Yeah, okay.
That's true. That has been our history of trying to retain a sense of, not the exact design, but a sense of, of the individuality of the original houses. I think where this falls apart, and it's such an easy little thing to fix, in my judgment, is those top two windows, which are replaced and reorganized. I think those should be retained, as we often ask applicants to retain the top windows in place. You're replacing three with two and reorganizing them. There's no reason to do that, that I can see, and there is a consistency across the row up there, so I think that should be retained. But for me, the retention of the L alone, and the fact that the other house doesn't have an L, is, and even the buttress arrangement up there at the top is somehow enough of an identity, for me, that once these were two houses, now they're going to be united into one, and I think a lot of what Marjorie said earlier is interesting. And we see such, such a divergent series of designs, often very contemporary, all the way up through the third floor, ripping out so much of the back, and this seems to be what the tradition over the last generation at least has been at the commission, to allow a relative degree of freedom in the, in the back expression, whereas the front is rigorously controlled. So I can support it if you'll just go back to those windows up in the top.
Three windows. Okay, I just want to make one other point about the, the tall windows, and I can, you know, I don't mind relenting on that, but I just do question that even though we've allowed a lot of flexibility in design, it seems that two things that we've asked for, and again, I just want us as a commission to recognize that this may be a slight shift, and that is that we'd like the expression of the floors of the building, and we, again, may not feel it's necessary in all situations, and that may be okay, and there may be enough reasons, in this particular case, not to actually allow or require the expression of the floors. So it's more of a question or an issue that I'm raising that we should just be aware of. I know Roberta wants to say something, and then...
No, I, I think in other buildings, yes, we have allowed large expanses of glass, and I don't think that that's a question, but I do think that in terms of, in terms of scale, this building, or these two buildings are a little abnormal in terms of what we've, we've looked at before, because we're talking about now, instead of looking at a building as two fifteen or twenty footers, or, and usually we're looking at one building when we're saying whatever size of your glass is fine, but now we're talking about combining, and I think it changes the character of the rear of the building immensely, to me, and, and it's not ju, I mean, I don't, in some senses, if the windows were squared off, maybe it was, it would be better, but I think the arches actually emphasizes the verticality of the back and makes it seem grander than I would want, in terms of his, if, you know, and we're, we're looking at it, we're, we're aboard looking at preservation and historical issues, and I think if we're looking at the rear yard, then we should be thinking that too, and I know you can't see it, or, and there are cases that, you know, we've asked for changes, even when you could not see the rear yard, because we thought that something could be done in a way that would make the elevation more appropriate to the whole idea of, of the history of that block or those houses or whatever. And so in that vein, I just think that this, to me, is, is an elevation is grander, comes off looking grander than it needs to, and is not as appropriate as it could be.
The discussion raises a very interesting issue for me, and it makes me think of the Dulcard book on the modification of townhouses over time. How that book was really analyzing a, a very systemic kind of wave of modifications that were done all in a similar vein over a fairly discreet period of time, that now is part of New York history. And the fact that this comes up after several previous, some of them fairly recent, makes me think that, well, maybe this is the next wave, you know, maybe the, maybe, you know, but it's funny, because in the earlier wave, in the Dulcard nineteen twenties wave, there were no regulations to forestall someone shearing off their, their stoop and changing it into a neo-Georgian fantasy. But here, regulations are now in place, landmarks is in place, and, and it's, it, the question is, how do we allow for the profusion of this new morphology, if that's what it is, if that's what's going to happen, within the context of a landmark-protected district? And I think that, for me anyway, I'm, I'm, I'm okay, I mean, there's something funny about keeping the two facades in the front as these relics, façadism of this shiv, of what's going to be an ever gutting, further gutting, you know, who's the next guy's going to get three or four of them? I heard it's already happened in some parts of town, some musical talent. So, you know, that's kind of weird to have these just facades that are just hanging on, and behind it is this monster mansion. On, on the other hand, I think at the back, it's appropriate, maybe, to consider allowing for this expression to somehow enter into a dialogue with what came before it. And to that extent, even though I really don't like the aesthetic of this, and I think it's peculiar and not, neither, neither here nor there aesthetically, I think from the point of view of appropriateness, it's, I'm okay with the fact that, that the windows on the top have been differentiated. I think the applicant has addressed that as being contextual within the block, that there are brownstones of different sizes, and that there are some two-window and three-window ones. And I think that, for me, what makes these, what breaks the two-building fiction is the treatment on the, on the ground floor, where you'd never have these monster windows in an L. You'd never have them be the same as the other buildings, it would just be, you know, unheard of. But I think in this context, and we've seen it on the East Side a little bit too, I think there was a Pinoire project that had something similar, where there was like a series of big windows at the back. It is a new thing, and I think there should be a way for us to allow for the recognition of that while still retaining the remnants of the other. So I think it's okay as is.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, I think that the nature of the two buildings does need to be reestablished to some extent, and as the prior commentators have said. And I, I can go with the, the idea of carrying the windows around the L, I think is an interesting one, nice one. I do feel like the scale is just odd and, and doesn't, the scale of those windows, it is sort of like, if someone, commenters, testimonies at a ballroom, I was thinking, seems like a cathedral or something, it just doesn't seem appropriate to the house. There's something wrong there. And I think that the windows, we have plenty of large windows that we're permitting, but somehow these are just, they just seem out of, out of scale, out of proportion for this, for this size building, to me.
Well, I think that, first of all, I think it's a resolution here that can make all of us happy. I think, I think even those who think this is fine, with some tweaks, I'm sure it would still support it. So I think, I think the idea of just going back to what Fred had suggested, going back to the three windows, a very simple solution that I'm sure you could do. I think the idea of introducing at least some kind of horizontal element into the window will also break up the scale of it, and while I understand it may block some views, you are, there are views of your little, you know, your courtyard, and that's very lovely, but I don't think it's going to be a problem, and I don't think fundamentally it's going to change your ability to make a very beautiful home for yourselves, so. That seem reasonable? Okay, good. So if there are no other questions? I don't think they, yes, you should come back. That, that's good. We can see the last design. If you come back fairly quickly, then we can put you on. Well, if it's just about the windows, we could do it by staff, if, if all Commissioners feel okay with that. We're talking about a band, one vertical, a horizontal band in the windows, okay.
Yeah, it just, no, it doesn't have to be, it can be just even... Enter over the doors.
It can be, right, exactly. It can be fairly modest.
That doesn't have to be.
We can, Diana and Roberta, that's okay, we'll ask staff to work at the horizontal element.
I'm not sure that it actually does what I was thinking, but, I mean...
I got six.
Okay, we got six. Okay, all right. Diana, you're okay with that, by introducing?
I think I can.
Okay, thank you. All right, so in that case, we can move to resolution. Fred, do you want to read that?
Let me be sure I've got the right one. Here it is. Yep. In the matter of Forty-Eight Fifty West Sixty-Ninth Street, the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District, the application is to construct a rooftop addition and to reconstruct and redesign rear facades, modify the front areaways and a portion of one of the facades and install windows. I recommend approval, noting that the presence of the design of the proposed new entrance and masonry balcony will call, recall the scale and prominence of the missing historic stoop entrance, that the work will support the hierarchical organization of the facade and rhythm and unity of the row without eliminating any significant architectural features or precluding the future restoration of the stoop. That the proposed front facade windows will match the historic windows in terms of size, configuration, operation, and finish, and the use of aluminum cladding at the sashes of the arched-headed windows with wood brick moles will be a barely perceptible change in their appearance. That the proposed areaway wall and paving will be in keeping with the historic areaway walls and paving at neighboring properties in terms of placement, material heights, and profiles. That the presence and size of the one-story setback rooftop addition in conjunction with the existing rear addition will not overwhelm the building. That the reconstruction of the modern rear facade of Forty-Eight West Sixty-Ninth Street and the highly altered rear facade of Fifty West Sixty-Ninth Street will not eliminate any significant architectural features. That the predominance of masonry and high solid-to-void ratio of the proposed facades, as well as the use of punched masonry openings of modest size at the upper floors, will be consistent with the residential character and scale of the buildings, and that none of the proposed work on the roofs and rear facades will be visible from a public thoroughfare. Also, the applicant will retain the top three, the windows on the top floor of, is that Forty-Eight? Forty-Eight, Forty-Eight? They are already on the other side. And will work with staff to introduce horizontal elements in the long vertical window assemblies.
All in favor? All right. Any opposed?